Well, that's either like one minute. Okay. Welcome, everybody. Today is Wednesday, January 22nd, 2020, and we are at the Facilities and Finance Meeting. Finance and Facilities, I have a 50/50 chance. And before we get started, I thought it would be good if I introduced everybody in the room. This is our first meeting of a new group of us at the table. So on the Standing Committee from the... So my name is Lorinda, Lorinda Visnick. I represent Ward Six. On the Standing Committee to my right, we have Karen Robinson from Ward Five, also on the School Committee, and on my left, Kim Quelo from Ward Three on the School Committee. We are blessed to have two City Councilors serving with us on this term. We have City Councilor-at-Large Julie Flowers and Todd Rotundo from Ward One, Julie's Councilor-at-Large. We have, as members of the public, Jeffrey Silva, Lindsay, say your last name.
Charm, thanks for asking.
Do I hear the R in there?
I think I tried to say it.
Okay, okay. Oh, and if you're... So here, if your microphone is on red, that means you're muted, and then Kim will stand up in that room over there and like wave his arm.
I'll try not to make you stand up.
And we also have Paul Manzo. And so, members of the public, I wish to give you an extra big thank you because donating your free time to be here is just an extra level. I'd like to acknowledge that. The rest of us are maybe just a tad crazy to actually be in elected office. You guys are an extra level of crazy for donating your time. This evening in the audience, we have the School Committee Chair Rachel A. Bell, and then at this end of the table, we have all the brains of the school district. We have Jean, our Finance Director. We have Laura, who's going to take our meeting minutes, Dr. Chirocek, and this evening's guest speaker Bethany Spalansky. So a couple of things before we get going. We try not to look at our phones during the meetings. Technically, if you look at your phone, it becomes part of the open meeting. If your little light on your microphone is red, we can't hear... Well, we could probably hear you, but Kim can't, Bev-Cam can't. We tend to try to go through parts of the agenda that are perfunctory fairly quickly, but besides Paul and I, everybody else at the table, everyone else at the table who's not a school district employee is new. So I have asked Mr. Manzo to chair a process whereby we will try to create a primer. So the next time some new people come onto the board, because look how many new people there are versus what are old people, not that you're old, Mr. Manzo, but I am, I'm feeling rather old, that we have something to give everybody to get you up to speed to say, you know, when we talk about the revenues, this is kind of what it is and how we do it. So we don't really have that. We'll try to answer questions as we go. We'll try to use those questions to help us build the structure of the primer that will hopefully be the output of this term, hopefully of Mr. Manzo and I working together to capture, capture and convey that information. Okay, so I think that covers everything, and we're ready to giddy up. Okay, so go ahead.
Lorinda, I just would like to add that if anybody has any questions, we got in Finance, by all means, you can call me, come into the office, we can talk one-on-one if it's something that, you know, we're talking, that you need a little more explanation. When Bethany gives her PowerPoint, her presentation, if you have any questions during it, she's welcome to have questions, and the same thing with her, is if you have any questions, we got in special ed that it's like, okay, what are you even talking about? Bethany has welcomed everybody to come to their off, her office.
Okay. And then we'll just tag on one last thing. Sometimes you'll ask a question, and we'll say, oh, we'd like to table it, or we'll say, we'll take it offline. It's maybe that that'll be the topic of a future meeting, and we know that, for instance, if you had a question about athletics, we just had the athletic director in, but we might, so we might take that offline. Okay. So the first order of business is approval of minutes from our December 18th meeting, and I will note that none of you were in attendance at that meeting. So I was in attendance at that meeting, so I would ask that perhaps all of you abstain from voting on those meeting minutes. That's kind of, we tend to do that as a procedure to say, if I were not, if I was not at that meeting, I'm not going to vote on those meeting minutes. That said, I'm not the boss of you, I'm merely the Chair of the Committee. So I would entertain a motion to approve those meeting minutes. Do I have to make it because I'm the only one who was there? Robert's Rules, Paul is an expert at. So I look to you, Mr. Manzo.
I think you're correct. I think anyone can, any of the Committee members can make a motion and second it, but you're right, the people voting to approve should only, should be people who were here.
Cool, thank you. So I would entertain a motion to accept these meeting minutes.
I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
Fantastic. All those in favor?
Julie.
That would be one.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to work on that. And every, all those who say no, all those who abstain.
Abstain.
This is your chance to vote, get in the books. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven abstains. Okay, thank you, thank you for that. And so now, here's another thing that we normally do. Twice a year, we have the Director of the Schools, Building and Grounds come in and speak to us in person, but every other meeting, we just review the report, and you get this report in your packet ahead of time, and ideally, you would ask your questions ahead of time, and then maybe we would just cover the answers in this meeting. So for instance, I noted that in the report, I was a little concerned about the wipes clogging a nurse's station, and Mr. Howland, our B&amp;G Head, said we shouldn't be using wipes, but I have to imagine that our nurses want to use wipes as well as the teachers in their classrooms. So I directed that question over to Jean in an email ahead of time, and...
And so I did speak to Mr. Howland in regards to what was going on here, and he did inform me that he sent out an email to the principals. I'm not sure if that was plural, so he's going back to look into his emails to see, he was going to forward it to me, and I will send an email to the principals and to the nurse leader just to ensure that people are not throwing the wipes into the toilets, that they're throwing it into a trash receptacle. So I do not have a problem with them using wipes, but we can't be flushing them. The issue really is, is the container says flushable, but they're not making it to the, our system, so we will direct them to dispose of them, not flush.
Fantastic. Okay, so that having been said, as an example, does anybody else have any questions or concerns about the Building and Grounds Report?
And I'll just add to it that if there are any questions, you know, we can, you can ask them this evening or at our meetings. Between Dr. Shirocek and myself, we'll answer to the best of our ability if it's something that we have to go on to Tim Howland, or if you have any questions later, you can send them to, I prefer you to send them to Tim Howland and myself, so I know that the question has gone there, and then we'll get the answer. If it's something that's asked, I'll try to send an email to the whole group saying this was asked at the meeting and here's the answer, so I can get a more speedier response than wait until the next meeting. But if it's something of great magnitude, we probably bring it up as, put it on as an agenda item for the next meeting.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda this evening is a report, an update from our Special Education, our Administrator of Special Education and Pupil Personnel Services.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. I always enjoy coming and speaking to this subcommittee. I'm going to go ahead and get started. As Jean said, I'm happy to take questions as I go along. We've got a lot to cover, so I'll keep moving along, but if you've got questions, please don't hesitate to ask. So the agenda for the evening, I'm going to review some of our Special Education data. I'm going to talk about some changes within our department over the past year. I'm going to talk about Medicaid expansion, and also about our tiered focus monitoring. So here is an overview of our Special Education enrollment data from October 1. So this is a snapshot in time when we do one of our big reports. And so at the time of this report, we had 942 students enrolled in Special Education, and that's out of a total of 4,700 students total in the district. So out of the 942 students, we had 841 students who are in district. We had 78 students who are in out-of-district programs, and then we had 23 students who are itinerants. And just as a refresher, an itinerant is a student who is eligible for services, who comes to the Beverly Public Schools to receive services but doesn't attend the Beverly Public Schools. So they might go to a private school like Shore Country Day, or they may be homeschooled, or they may be preschool age and not be enrolled in school at all. Here is an overview of our out-of-district enrollment, and so you can see how it has changed over time. The enrollment is broken down by the type of placement, so that green bar represents the students who are in public day placements, so these would be consortium-type programs, collaborative programs. The yellow represents private day placements, and then the dark blue is residential. It's a little hard to see, but there are three in the residential. And then the bottom, the blue, is students who are in home-based programs. So home-based program is our most restrictive type of programs. We have very few students in those types of programs. So you can see over time, historically, we have had a decrease in our out-of-district enrollment, so we were at 78 at the time of our October 1 reporting. In addition to those 78 students, we also had four students who are at Recovery High School. We have three students who are placed in other public schools, and then we had three students who were tuitioned into our district from other public schools.
Miss Spalansky, can you speak to the drop from 19 to 20? We love to see that number be lower. Would you characterize that as aged out, or that we've been able to offer additional services and keep some students in?
Well, I'm actually going to go to the next slide because I talk about that next. Fantastic. So why are our enrollments decreasing in terms of our out-of-district? One of the main factors is that we have increased our in-district capacity to meet the needs of some of our most challenging students, and so this is really important so that students can stay within our district instead of going to out-of-district programs. We have had fewer move-ins. The move-in piece is obviously something that we don't have control over and can vary a lot year to year. This year, we've had very few move-ins. We've had a couple of move-outs as well, which historically, we haven't had a lot of students who are in out-of-district programs who have moved out of district. We do have students every year who graduate from our out-of-district programs or who age out. So students are eligible for services, some students up to the age of 22, at which point they age out into adult services. And then additionally, we've had the successful return of many students back to in-district programs, and this is a really exciting change that we've seen, and it's really evidence of the fact that our in-district programs do have increased capacity to meet those needs.
And can you speak again to, especially to our new members, about the fact that once someone goes out, they don't have to come back in?
That's correct.
So the fact that they came back in is a big deal?
That's correct, yeah. When students go out of district and they sign a placement page for an out-of-district program, that becomes what's known as their stay-put placement. So that means that that is the placement that they're entitled to. We always want to bring students back in district. We hope that families want to bring students back in district too, but again, as you said, the parents have to be willing to bring their students back in district because they do have an entitlement at that point to stay out.
Fantastic, thank you.
You're welcome. And here's just another chart that shows our change in out-of-district over time, and this represents new placements as well as move-ins. So you can see over the past couple of years, you know, there's been a lot of variation with regard to students who have moved into the district and out-of-district placements. We had two years where we had a very, very high number of students who moved into the district, but if you look at the light blue bars, you can see a very steady decline in the number of new placements of students from the district to out-of-district placements. So that's trending in the right direction and very positive, you know, positive based on our in-district program capacity. Okay, in terms of our department, we've had significant growth of our AIM program, and our AIM program is for students with severe, severe needs. The majority of students have autism, but we also have students with global cognitive delays. And right now, currently, we have four classrooms that are located at the Cove School. Our classrooms are very full, and so we're monitoring the enrollment and, you know, going to have to make decisions about expanding that program if the enrollment continues the way that it has. We also have the addition of a school outreach counselor, and this position is really focused on our most at-risk students. They've worked, she's worked a lot with families for students who have chronic attendance issues and have other risk factors going on. Primarily, she's been working on creating attendance plans, providing home support, and connecting families with community-based resources to get students back in school and engaged in their education.
Is this an okay time to ask a question?
Sure.
I just want to clarify, so I understand the new school outreach counselor, which I think was approved last year, right? Is that just for the AIM program or is that city, district-wide?
No.
Okay, that's right.
That's district-wide. Yep, she's, she's district-wide. She primarily is working at the high school and at the middle school levels, although she's, it's a district-wide position, and she can support students at the elementary level as well. Yes, but thank you for clarifying that's separate from the AIM program. That's just another addition within our department. Mm-hmm. We've also had continued expansion of our preschool program. This year, we've had, at the time that I wrote this slide, we had had 60 referrals into our preschool program, which is a very, very high number. Of course, all those students don't necessarily end up being eligible for programming, but many of them do, and so our classrooms have continued to, to grow, and so we'll continue to monitor that as well. We've had a big push toward inclusive services. This year, we have a big focus on expansion and strengthening of our co-teaching model. I've mentioned in previous meetings that we're working with Lisa Decker, who's a national renowned expert in co-teaching, and she's really helping us expand our co-teaching across all levels. The other big push in terms of inclusive services is with our related service providers, so speech and language, OT. Traditionally, these are services that have been provided in a pull-out model, so students have been removed from the classroom, they go into the, a separate setting, and they receive therapeutic supports in that separate setting, but we're really working with the related service providers to provide more inclusive support so that students can remain in the general education setting, and so that the supports are really linked to the curriculum and linked to the educational outcomes. We've also had an increase this year in transportation costs. This is primarily related to the need for more individual runs. We do have some students who can't be transported safely with other students just due to the level of need, and so, you know, individual runs have an increased cost. We've also had fewer drivers, and so this has limited our ability to, sometimes we've had to look at other services to be able to transport students, so all these have had some increases to our transportation costs. Circuit Breaker. So we have a change in the formula for Circuit Breaker. So just as a refresher, Circuit Breaker is a state special education reimbursement program to provide additional state funding for high-cost special education students. So you can kind of think of it as a mail-in rebate, so we spend the money upfront, and then we get a percentage of that money back. So for FY '20, the reimbursement for costs per students exceeding 45, 792. So any money that we spent above and beyond that per student, we were reimbursed at a rate of between 70 and 75 percent. I'm not sure the final rate for FY '20 yet, but you should note that transportation costs have not been included in that Circuit Breaker formula. For FY '21, the reimbursement cost per student exceeding 45, 793, that's the new base claim amount, will be reimbursed at a rate of 70 to 75 percent, but we will also get reimbursement up to 25 percent for the eligible transportation costs, and they do say, subject to appropriation, so we may not get that full 25 percent, but that is positive because it hopefully will result in more revenue, yes.
Is the perclaim language that you're using equivalent to per student?
So the perclaim is four times foundation, so it's four times the average foundation per pupil cost. I'm not honestly sure because this number just came out literally days ago. Typically, that number, the four times foundation number typically goes up about $1,500 a year. This year, you'll note, it only went up $1, so I'm not quite sure. They had talked last year about changing the formula to change that threshold, so instead of having it be four times foundation, it would be closer to three times foundation, which would allow for more reimbursement for districts. So I'm not quite sure where, how they came up with that number, but it's considered to be the four times foundation is the base cost.
What is foundation?
Foundation, so it's essentially the average per pupil cost, yeah, across the state. You're welcome.
And Bethany, although, go ahead.
Sorry. Just explain what an eligible transportation cost, what does that mean?
That's a good question. It hasn't been very well defined yet. They've pretty much just said eligible, eligible cost at a rate of 25 percent, and so we're waiting for more guidance on what that means. Jean and I were talking about that the other day, and even our interpretation within how that would be reimbursed was, was different, so we're waiting for more guidance on that.
But we're not sure if that's all sped transportation or just for transportation for those students that, that reach that threshold of $45,000 plus dollars or...
Right, so that, that's where Bethany and I have two difference of opinions on that. So I'm taking it that they're going to add the 25, going to add the cost of transportation, take 25 percent of it and add it on top of the rate to see if we get to the 45, 793. Bethany's thinking in her special ed directors area, they're kind of thinking that it's just going to be an additional, you're going to get 25 percent. So we will let you know when we know, but right now, that's, that's where it is, and it's subject to appropriation, so they only have so much money, and then what can happen is the reason why we say 70 to 75 percent is this year, we did get 75 percent, but the state only puts so much money out there. So if everybody's adding all these individual runs that she's talking about earlier, that could be highly, high cost, then you're going to probably see that number drops back down. But the statute, as when I talk about Circuit Breaker a little bit later on, the revenues, it is, does say that the statute does say it's 75 percent, but it has not always been at 75. I've seen it in my nine years, all the way down to 48 percent.
I think the average is usually around 70 percent.
That's where we, yes.
Yeah, so we're actually attending a meeting on February 7th that will go more in-depth about this whole issue and how we can expect the reimbursement to look because it's new, new to us.
All right, so if we, if we went back to slide number three, you don't have to, you don't have to, but it was the pie chart that said, how many students do we have and in which category?
Mm-hmm.
I know you're going to talk in a previous, in a future slide about the amount of money we get in Circuit Breaker, but can you tell me from a number of students' point of view, like approximately, how many students do we have for which we hit, which we hit the Circuit Breaker?
Yep, so I would, I'm going to, I'll give you a ballpark. I would ballpark it around 50 students. This Circuit Breaker does apply to in-district students as well, so it applies to out-of-district students whose tuitions exceed that number, the 45, 792 for next year, 45, 793, but it also does apply to in-district students who have high-cost programs. So typically, we may only have a handful of students in district who meet that threshold, and typically, those are students who have, you know, very high level of, you know, either medical need, like one-to-one nursing, or very extensive ABA programming or that type of thing.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Medicaid expansion. So Medicaid reimburses for medically necessary services that are delivered in schools. These are primarily the related services again, speech and language, OT, physical therapy, and these are for students who are enrolled in mass health. So we've, you know, done Medicaid billing for many, many years, but as of July 1, the process changed under the Medicaid expansion, and there were very significant changes in terms of the documentation requirements, and this has had a very significant impact on our department because it's, you know, it's very, very time-consuming and also very confusing to navigate all the changes that have taken place within the Medicaid system. So this is a chart just to show some of the primary changes that have happened. So prior to the expansion, the only nursing services that were reimbursable were services that were through an IEP, so a student had to be eligible for special education, and the IEP had to specify nursing services. Under the expansion, we now can bill for non-IEP nursing services. There are a whole lot of rules and regulations around the services that can be billed for. They have to be a certain number of minutes, and there's different qualifications, but they do not have to be included on an IEP. Prior to the expansion, we were not allowed to bill for any evaluations, and now, under the expansion, we can bill for evaluations. Pre-expand, expansion, all direct services could be billed, but under the expansion, in-class services cannot be billed. So if you remember back to a few slides ago when we talked about changes within the department and we talked about inclusive services, you know, all those services now that we're pushing into the classroom, which is going to lead to better educational outcomes, is not reimbursable under Medicaid because it's not considered medically necessary. And then also, under the expansion, we are now able to bill for services above and beyond the IEP, so students, students who are on 504 plans, who are on individual healthcare plans or other types of plans can be billed as well. So the bottom line is that it is going to have a significant impact on our reimbursement. We don't completely know what that impact will be because there are many services that we can no longer bill for, but there's also services now that we can, and with the nursing services being new, we're not totally sure how that will impact our revenue. Okay, tiered focus monitoring. So districts are reviewed through a six-year cycle that is previously known as coordinated program review, and there are different elements that are reviewed by the department and the elements that are, that are most focused on student outcome. So every other year, you're either in Group A or in Group B, and the different elements are reviewed through each of those processes. So tiered focus monitoring is different than coordinated program review in a lot of ways. One of the main ways that it's different is that it allows for a more different... One of the main ways that it's different is that it allows for a more differentiated monitoring. So before, every district who went through coordinated program review had the same process, went through the same monitoring. Now, there's differentiated monitoring based on some data that, that they gather about how our district has performed on previous monitoring and on monitoring that we're currently doing. So right now, we're in the self-assessment phase of our tiered focus monitoring, and so we are required to review some special education and civil rights documents, and then also to review some of our special education student records. And once we complete these internal reviews, we submit our self-assessment to the department, and then, based on their review of our self-assessment, they determine which tier of monitoring we fall on. So tier one and two indicates no risk or low risk, and tier three or four indicates greater risk. So we're in that self-assessment period now. It will be submitted by May first, and then after that, we'll have information about where we fall in terms of our tiered monitoring. So next year will be our onsite verification phase. So during this phase, the department will come, come to Beverly, come to our district, and they will review some additional files, some additional documents. They will do surveys of parents of students of disabilities. They will conduct interviews of staff to make sure that the information that they gather is consistent with all of our procedures and protocols. They will do interviews with our CPAC representatives, and then they will also do observations of our classrooms and other facilities to make sure that we're meeting all regulatory requirements. So that will happen next year.
So that almost sounds like a NIESC for special ed?
Yep, for special education and civil rights, yep.
So if they come back with any, any recommendations, will the school have to, the school district will have to follow them?
Right. So what happens is, they make recommendation, they go through and see if there are any areas of non-compliance. The self-assessment phase is actually a phase for us to identify ourselves if we have any areas of non-compliance, and it's our opportunity to fix them before our onsite review. This is a different process than the coordinated program review in that they're not trying to catch you making a mistake, they're trying to provide guidance to improve practice. And so if they do find areas of non-compliance, they work with the district to come up with corrective action plans, which then we implement, and then they follow up on over time.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anybody else have questions?
I just have the one, so if you back up a couple of slides, you talked about Group A universal standards, or Group B universal standards?
Yes.
Do we have to, is there a reason why we should know what those are, or?
No, they just, they basically broke up different elements that are tied to student outcome, and they, the way that they used to do it before, they kind of looked at everything all at the same time in one cycle, and then they did kind of a midway checkpoint, and they just, they do it differently now, so they break it up into two different groups. And so you're basically on an every other year, every, every three-year cycle of either being in Group A or Group B. It's just which elements they look at.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we shouldn't feel bad if we're in the B group?
No, nope. It's just whatever year we got assigned to. Yep.
I have one question.
Sure.
I'm not sure if it falls into this platform or not. I'm still new, I'm going to give it a try, though. Where do we stand, fall with having trauma-informed classrooms for special needs children that are in the mainstream classes versus those small, smaller classrooms than like the SSP classrooms?
Yeah. So we, of course, have our therapeutic classrooms that you alluded to for students who require, who have emotional impairments and require substantially separate classrooms. But we also have trauma-informed practices across the district, and, you know, we, we are, through our work, through our social-emotional learning, and the supports that we are doing through our PD, we're working with teachers to make sure that we're building our trauma-informed practices across our district, because obviously, there's a small number of students who require, you know, a full therapeutic program, but the majority of our students, of course, are in the mainstream, in the general education classrooms. And so that's a lot of the PD that we're doing through our social-emotional learning pathway to work with teachers on building up those competencies.
I have a question.
Sure.
With regard to the Medicaid expansion?
Yes.
Do you see that filling in where you currently have deficits? Where you have to pull money from other sources? Do you see that as a savings, or additional resources?
So it's really hard to say what's going to happen in terms of that revenue, because we just, with it being new, we've gotten limited kind of guidance and feedback on, on what the impact will be.
I think the only thing that I would add is, June cases and Bethany were on this from the very beginning. So I think we are a little bit ahead of some of the other districts. We made some significant changes to what we were thinking and what we were doing. I don't know if you remember the SNAP program that I mentioned, but we instituted a new program into, to work with our data collection within the nurse, for all of the nurses at all of the buildings, so that we could better report, because the system that we had before wasn't aligned at all with any of the new requirements, what we, that we need to do in order to make collections. So we're kind of, we're kind of hoping we're going to ratchet up on the nursing side. We know we have a huge loss on the therapy side, where the direct services are no longer reimbursable. So, but we've made some, some strides. We worked really hard with our therapists in terms of their reporting. It used to be the old bubble sheets. We created some formats for our, in-district, for our therapists to use, so that we can at least be claiming what is a claimable service that we provide. And I think, we're, I think we're hoping to break even. I'm not sure that, we're not, we're not sure we might get there. But we, we don't anticipate it being any increase in Medicaid reimbursement at this point in time, so.
And we'll have to work with the city on that, because the funds, the funds actually go into the city. So we'll need to keep them informed of what we see. We haven't had any reimbursement. So right now, all Medicaid reimbursement goes into the city, and they use part of those funds to fund our appropriation. So Bethany's won't, will not see any reduction, but Bryant Ailes on the city side, we'd see a reduction of income coming in, so that's something that we'll have to work on once we see and know. Right now, we really have no idea of what's going to happen, but.
All right, I have a question. Bethany, it's the same question I ask you every year. You come in front of us, and I appreciate your entertaining it. Is, are there programs that you wish we had that we don't have? Or are there programs that you think, if we had it, we could pull back even more of those children that are currently out of district? If, you know, in the ideal world, paint your picture, would you have different services, different programs here?
I don't know that I would have different services. I think we need to continue to expand our in-district programs. Our in-district programs are exceptional. We have, I have people contact me all the time about tuitioning students into our in-district programs, and the caution is just that we want to make sure we can meet the needs of our students before we're also tuitioning in other students. So I don't know that there are any services or programs that I think are missing, but I do think we need to continue to work to expand our programs so that they really can meet the full spectrum of need, because the needs have changed a lot over the past years. And, you know, we have a lot of students with severe need who should be with us in our district. Yeah.
So, an expansion example?
I think, you know, again, our AIM program is a, an exceptional program. I think there are things that we can continue to add to make it more comparable to some of the private day placements that we have students in. You know, placements such as Hopeful Journeys and Nishoba. The overall methodology and programming is very similar, but there are some things that they're able to offer that we just plain and simply can't offer in our current program structure. And so those are things I'd like to look at really closely. I'm working with our, my out-of-district coordinator on that, so that we can, you know, figure out what key components might make a really significant difference for our kids.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
So, following up on that, so you've increased your AIM population and services provided. Do you see complementary increases in the, the middle and high school programs that, that follow along?
Yeah, so we have right now, as I mentioned, the four, let me go back to that. The four classrooms at Cove, we have expanded, so now we have two of the, so the, as the program goes up, we call it the attain program. We have now two classrooms of the attain program at the middle school. We have two classrooms of the accomplish program at the high school. And then we also have our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program, the launch program. So we've seen the expansion throughout, you know, we definitely have kind of a, a bubble right now at the elementary level. And, and, you know, as I mentioned, our preschool is also expanding, and for the most part, the kids who come into our AIM program are coming from our intensive preschool, and those programs are expanding too, so we're definitely seeing the expansion across the entire vertical alignment of the program.
So if you look ahead, do you see needing to add more resources in the middle and high school for those programs as well?
Certainly, long-term, yes, for sure. Yeah.
This may be naive question, but I'm wondering, is there, is there a, historically, a rate at which people, which kids graduate from the special ed program? And where they sort of graduate into a, a, a non-assistance-type class setting?
So you mean students who are, who are no longer eligible for services while they're still within the Beverly schools?
They start with special ed, and maybe through the school year, they, or through, you know, middle school and into high school, they sort of become able to take on the classwork, maybe with some minor support, but not necessarily classified in that level of special ed support? And what the fraction is if it does happen?
Yeah. So I looked at this data really carefully two years ago to look at the breakdown per grade and kind of when students are exiting, and so I think there is, we tend to have more identification as students are approaching fourth grade, as, you know, students are really reading to learn, and that, you know, that kind of shift in learning happens. And then we tend to have a decrease as students get up more toward the high school level, because for many students, especially students with mild disabilities, we've provided the remediation, and at that point, they've developed the strategies that they need to be able to be independent in terms of their learning. So we do kind of see that then kind of drop off. There are students who are eligible throughout their entire time that they're in the Beverly Public Schools because of the level of their need, but we do see, I can't give you a percentage overall. I think it really varies by grade, but what we notice is just that increase, and then that decrease of students' eligibility rate by grade. Yeah.
Can you go back one more slide to the, the one where, yeah, no, the one, the one with the, keep going back, that one? So I just need to say, and I, I can't say this enough, this is almost historic, right? I, I don't know if there are any districts around that are looking at their special education out-of-district placements and bringing back almost twenty percent, or, you know, twenty percent of their students, and, and having a decrease of twenty percent in the number of out-of-district students. That is, it's, it's historic, it's commendable, you know. I think, forget about the financial impact, because I think we have to be cognizant that while there, we're not paying for out-of-district, we need to provide the services in-district. And so right now, we're really strengthening those programs, and it allows us to do that without an additional cost to the district. It's just good for kids. I mean, these are kids from Beverly, and they belong in Beverly, and we like that they're staying in Beverly. So it's, it's a testament to Bethany's leadership in terms of special education in our special education department. It's a testament to our team chairs who are working really hard to make sure that they're connecting with families and parents, and, and explaining and understanding the benefits of coming back. It's a testament to our teachers in special education and regular education that they're opening their classrooms and they're welcoming students that have learning differences into our buildings. So I think this is just something to be extremely proud of, and I just wanted to make sure I accentuated that, because if you're not typically looking at special education data, you may not understand that what you're looking at is something that is, is truly remarkable. So I just wanted to take a moment and say that, so. That's all.
We could do the wave.
We could do the wave.
You could start that, you're on the end of the table. All right, any further questions for Bethany before we let her escape? All right, thank you, as usual. Fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
I'm not letting her leave yet, because the next two, the next two, the next two items are things that she asked for. So we'll, we'll let her stay just a tad longer. So I have a request for a part-time teacher of the deaf position in front of you. And we did send along also a copy of a newly-created job description for this teacher of the deaf in hard of hearing, because this is a, excuse me, a new position to the district. I'll let Bethany talk a little bit about it, and then, my realm, the funding is going to come from the tuition account, where she has brought some students from outside the district in. That's where the funding is going to be coming from.
So traditionally, we have provided students who require teacher of the deaf, we've provided through contracted services. Unfortunately, that is no longer an option right now. The company that we've used for, for as long as I've been in Beverly is no longer operating. And there's actually quite a shortage in terms of contracted teacher of the deaf providers. And so the hope is that if we can find somebody that will have a part-time person in district to be able to meet the needs of our students who do require that service.
All right, so before we open it up for questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this request for a new position?
Still moved?
And a second?
Second.
Fantastic. So Lindsay, do you have a question?
Did we, I guess, just for my own educational purposes, did we anticipate that this end with the prior support provider was going to end?
No.
So we have thirteen kids that aren't getting?
So it was, it was not anticipated, it was, it was due to a tragedy that happened, yeah. And so the students are not unsupported. We do have some teachers who have, who are very experienced in working with students who are deaf or hard of hearing, but there's a specific role of teacher of the deaf right now that is unfilled. So we do have some direct services, and we are consulting and contracting with other providers, but it's not the same level of support that we had through SoundWorks.
Sure.
Yeah.
I was curious if, for either situation, I read the request for the additional part-time nurse and the teacher for the deaf. Okay, I'll take the question about, I'll take the question that I have for the teacher of the deaf situation off the table. But I recognized that there was a comment about the contracted providers being inconsistent and unreliable for the nurse, and I wondered if there was a contract in place that might allow us to recoup some of?
All right, we're going to table that question until we talk about the nurse. Anybody else have any questions about our teacher for the deaf position? I guess my question is around the totality of the funding. So we used to pay contracted services, so I heard you love and clear, Jean, that you're going to take the funding from tuition in. But do you anticipate that it'll be approximately the same amount of money? Will there be any savings? Will there be an additional cost, because we'll have a full-time employee on staff? Where are we relatively speaking?
Right. So we haven't crossed that bridge yet, because we don't know if we're going to be getting somebody full-time, somebody part-time. So that's what we'll work out with Bethany. Right now, it was coming out of her special ed contracted services line. So if the cost isn't going out, she'll have a little extra money there. And that she, you know, has said that that's one thing that she felt that the tuition account, you know, would be utilized for. So at this point, we do not know until we post the position, see what we find.
And then moving forward, that becomes an additional staff member that we have to maintain through our budgeting process, right?
Correct. I will say too, there is a significant shortage of teachers of the deaf, and there are a lot of communities in this area who are in the same position right now because of the loss of SoundWorks as a, as a contracting agency. So I would see the opportunity, if we were lucky enough to be able to hire somebody for this position, I do think it would provide us with an opportunity to tuition kids into our program because of this service. So that would offset the cost as well.
All right, I keep looking over here to see if anybody else has any questions. Ms. Flowers?
Thank you. Ms. Blantsey, can you just talk a little bit about, if there are thirteen students right now, can you talk about where the teacher of the deaf would be housed, is it one particular classroom? Do they travel across classrooms, across age groups? Can you just talk a little bit more about how the position works and where it's housed, or how that, how that flows between schools?
Sure, yep. The students are spread amongst all of our schools, so they're not, like, grouped together within a program or a classroom.
That was my assumption.
Right. The students are, you know, within the, within the mainstream setting and full inclusion placements. The role of the teacher of the deaf varies from direct service provision to consultation. The consultation piece is actually crucial, because again, these students are in general education classrooms, and a lot of the work that needs to be done is just in, you know, removing learning barriers from the classroom and making sure that teachers are able to meet the needs. So it would be across the district, and the students, at this point, we have students at every level who would require that service.
Thank you. So just to check my understanding?
Sure.
It sounds to me like this is a, in large part, is a supportive position for general education teachers as well, where this teacher would be entering the classrooms, helping those teachers to be prepared and equipped to teach at their best.
Absolutely, yep. Monitoring equipment within classrooms, making sure that, that students are able to access the classroom, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And realistically, is this, I mean, it says part-time, but do you realistically see this as more of a, a full-time position? I mean, how many hours of a week of services from SoundWorks did you get?
So I think that, it, it's hard to say exactly, because some of the services, some of the service hours were overlapping. I think that based on the current students that we have now, and the current IEPs that we have now, the services could be met, you know, in probably a twenty-hour-a-week position. But again, if we were fortunate enough- But again, if we were fortunate enough to have a teacher of the deaf on staff, I fully anticipate that we would be able to tuition some students in, because there really are not public schools that have this position as part of their special education department. So it would be, you know, an opportunity, in which case then we would need more time to meet the needs of those students, yeah.
All right, so my last question is around kind of the negative Nellie. What happens if we don't get somebody to fill this position? Do we do the exact reverse of what you just said? Do we have to send our children out of district?
So right now, there really truly aren't public school settings that have programs that we could even send our students to. The only, there's a program in Newton, there's one collaborative program. But honestly, for the most part, I think the families don't necessarily, they're not looking for their students to go out of district. They're looking for their students' needs to be met in district. So I think, you know, at the end of the day, we're required to either create or locate. So we want to create, we want to be able to contract or to hire staff so we can meet the needs of the students. If we weren't able to do that, we would have to look at other options, but the options are limited.
Any further questions? All right, there's a motion on the table to approve this position. All those in favor?
Do we vote?
You get to vote, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, do I vote?
Yeah, everybody, everybody gets to vote. Vote early, vote often, how do you like that answer? Okay, that's what I said. Okay, so everybody in favor? Oh Laura, I love that you're counting, thank you. All right, unanimous, then we don't have to count. All right, thank you. All right, next, Jean.
The next position I have here coming forward is a additional, a part-time nurse for the special ed program. And the funding for this would also come from the tuition account. Bethany?
So this part-time nurse would serve our launch program, which is our eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old program. This program is primarily focused on building vocational skills and, and community engagement with our students. And so students go off-campus quite a bit, either for job sites or for different community activities. Many of our students have very significant medical needs, and so they need to go off-site with a nurse. We, as I mentioned, have been contracting for these services, but it's, the availability is very inconsistent. And sometimes we don't find out until the day of whether there's actually a nurse available to go with our students. And so if there isn't a nurse available, then we end up canceling community outings or vocational opportunities for our students. We also, again, looking forward at the cohort that we have coming up. We know that this is going to be a continued area of need, because we do have students with more severe needs who are in our district. And so looking at the group coming up over the next couple of years, we anticipate that this will be a continued area of need within the program.
Right, so I would entertain a motion to add this position of a part-time nurse for the launch program.
So moved. A second.
Fantastic, are there any questions? Anybody have any questions?
If there, so there was a contract, we were going through contracted providers, but the coverage was inconsistent and reliable. Is there any opportunity through the language in the contract to get reimbursement, since the services under that contract weren't going well and we have to seek another opportunity? Does that question make sense?
So we just, we, the way that the contract works is we, you know, we ask for whatever kind of nursing coverage we need for that day and then we get billed for the time that they provide. So it's just a matter of just, yeah, it's just kind of, we get billed for services provided. The issue is that if we call them and we say we need a nurse on Wednesday from nine to twelve and they say we don't have anybody, then we have to scramble and figure out how to make sure that then, that the medical needs are covered for our students, yeah.
So will you be building your launch program along, around the nurse scheduling, basically, where you go off-site?
So the way that it works within our launch program, for the most part, is students are off-site in the mornings. They go on their different vocational activities in the mornings. So our hope would be then to hire the part-time nurse for the time when the students are out within the community. So that that would be, it would give them the flexibility then to go wherever they need to go on those days, so.
In terms of the nursing staff that exists right now in the school system, is there opportunity to tap into any of that?
So the problem is that the nurses that we have, you know, need to be onsite for the students that they have here. So the, you know, the high school nurses help out within our launch program with our students now, just based on the medical needs that they have when they're in the building. But the issue is that when they go off-site, the nurse can't go off-site with them because of the students who are at the high school who need nursing coverage, yeah.
But is there an opportunity possibly to create a full-time position where one individual does the launch program and then provides additional support at other times for students that, that are at the high school?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure exactly what the need would be outside of the special education programming, but certainly if there, that has not been something that's brought, that's been brought to my attention, that they need more.
Combine, if we, do we have any part-time that we would expand to full-time, is that what you're saying?
Well, if, if you're having trouble finding a part-time nurse, is there an opportunity to expand medical support at the high school by hiring a full-time person who does two things?
Right. I mean, it's possible, we do have a part-time nurse over at Cove for some students who have medical needs within our AIM program. So I think it just comes down to finding the, you know, if there's somebody who could, and the hours lining up.
And the hours to be, to line up.
Right, and that, yeah.
I think that's the only part-time that we have right now.
Right, just at the Cove, yeah.
All right, any further questions? Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve the addition of a part-time nurse for the launch program. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Does she get to go now?
Now she make a home.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is Jean, Jean giving us a presentation, an update on the circuit breaker revenues.
Yes, so what I have here, so Bethany did cover some of this in her presentation, so it kind of overlapped a little bit. But what I have here is a little explanation of what circuit breaker revolving is. So some people, they're not even sure what circuit breaker is. When I first heard it, I thought they were talking about the circuit breaker and the, turning on the electricity in the house. Excuse me, so, so I did take a little data right from the DOE's website on circuit breaker. It provides state assistance to districts with high-cost special needs students. And it tells you that it's defined as, you know, four times state average foundation budget. So for this, the FY nineteen claim, which is, we received the money in twenty, was forty-five, seven ninety-two. So any money that we spend out to on a student cost that's for instructional or tuition costs, and remember not transportation at this time, we would get reimbursed. So if a cost is fifty thousand, we would get, take that five thousand, I say it was fifty thousand, seven ninety-two for my math head, that five thousand, then we only get seventy to seventy-five percent of that five thousand. So the first forty-five, we don't get anything, that's our cost. They mentioned in here that it's both for in-district and out-of-district expenses associated with implementing a student's individual education plan, which is known as an IEP. Transportation costs have not been eligible, however, they're starting with next year to begin at a reimbursement of twenty-five percent, subject to appropriation, the state always has to say. With that in mind, we, what we said earlier is Bethany and I have two different forms of what we think. So when we, after our, our meetings, we will hear what's going on that we'll know, you know, how are they doing it? Right now, they're not giving us any guidance, except they're throwing that bone out there, saying, hey, we're gonna give you twenty-five percent. And they are trying to work that up, that then the next year, it's gonna be fifty, seventy-five. So that's why I think my formula is gonna be right, not Bethany's, but if Bethany is right, I will be very happy. So right now, the state statute reimbursement is seventy-five percent, and that's the amount over the base claim. I was trying to come up with some wording and so people could understand, because they talk about the foundation. And I know you would mention, what is foundation? And then whenever you look at the DOE, they're always talking about foundation, that, the circuit breaker foundation now, which was, that's part of the state. So, so Bethany and I came up with, let's just call it the base claim amount, because that's what we put in. So next year, that's gonna increase by a dollar. And, which is kind of a good thing, that what Bethany said earlier, that it usually goes up fifteen hundred, that, you know, if it, if keeping it down to lower, that's actually better. Excuse me, and the reimbursement rate for the past several years has been between seventy and seventy-five percent. As I mentioned earlier, I'm thinking probably maybe like eight, seven, eight years ago, it was, we only got forty-eight percent, but that was the abnormal. There was two years in a row that the reimbursement rate was not very well. We received notification from the DESE that the rate for FY nineteen will be seventy-five percent. Remember, we get that in twenty, which is now. Our reimbursement amount is two million, three seventeen, eight seventy-five. Therefore, for our finance and facilities group, mainly the school committee, talking about, that's an increase of three hundred thirteen thousand, nine nineteen over what we budgeted when we did our budget this year. Excuse me, that amount will just go into the circuit breaker revolving. So we are not able to carry over funds, however, we are able to carry over revolving funds. So when we talk about our appropriated budget, we spend it in the year that we have it, or it goes back to the city's general fund. However, one of the areas that we can have as a savings account would be our circuit breaker. And what we do not have built in our appropriated budget is a special education contingency fund. However, that's what we use the circuit breaker for, is a contingency fund. Excuse me, and we work with Bryant Ailes and Maya Cahill knowing that. So that's something that the city knows, we need to have that, because if we do have a high cost come in, so we do have like one student could cost two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. So that's why you do want to have that. So, so that forty-five, seven ninety-two is the minimum. If anybody is less than that, we don't get anything, any dollar over that. And our highest one, Bethany and I looked at, was about two ninety-nine. So it can be extreme, so that's why you do need to have that contingency. So therefore, what I'm specifying here is that we're, we're receiving more in, so we're gonna, then we budgeted offsets, so then I'm planning on that staying in the circuit breaker. Hopefully, Bethany's numbers stay low like they are now. However, if we all of a sudden do have a spike in May-June, which of course, it's only a few months, we'd have that safety net, we have that savings. Beverly uses their circuit breaker reimbursement funds for tuition, contracted services, so similar to what she was talking about in other areas, and as our special education contingency. The funds are deposited into our revolving account, which the MUNIS count number is two oh one oh eight. The expenses are charged directly to the circuit breaker revolving account, and that we receive the funds from the state on a quarterly basis. The Department of Education has issued a memorandum of extraordinary relief in January. What happens there is if we, our costs go over the previous year by a hundred and twenty-five percent, we're able to put in for this extraordinary relief. So I've been here nine years, we have not had to do that. The way Bethany is bringing students in, back in, and not sending them out, we probably won't see that either. However, what does happen is if the other communities also are in the same position as us, then the state that has that bucket of money then sends it back out to everybody, shares the wealth. So what I'm saying here in the second to last paragraph is that we received last year in FY nineteen, sixty-four thousand, eight twenty-three, and we get that like on June thirtieth. So that, we, we received that additional funds that went into the revolving account, which therefore carried over into the next fiscal year. So that is our, so our savings account or our special education contingency account had that. At the end of FY nineteen, in June, we were able to retain five hundred and fourteen thousand, six twenty-seven, which that sixty-four is in there, account for our special, that, and that equates to twenty-six percent of a reserve. So in other words, our whole circuit breaker, we were able to reserve twenty-six percent. The goal is to maintain fifty percent if we can. Some districts are able to save all of their circuit breaker, but our goal is to get to fifty percent. By law, we do have to spend it in the next fiscal year. So it's not something that you just save for a rainy day, ten years down the road, we're setting our money. So what, we would like to get to a healthy fifty percent. If we are able to maintain the three thirteen that I said earlier and what we already had, I'm looking at that our reserve would go from a twenty-six percent to about thirty, thirty-four percent. So, and that's good, I mean, I'm not worried that we're not at the fifty percent, but any, any balance. So remember back those years when we had forty-eight percent, we spent it all in that year, there was no carrying over. So if anybody has any questions on circuit breaker, Mr. Manzo said to me earlier about circuit breaker. Hopefully, I covered everything here, but if not, any questions?
So in Bethany's presentation, she talked about how the number of students going out of district has declined over this past year. Circuit breakers are reimbursement program. And so if we have fewer students going out of district this year, then is it reasonable to expect that our circuit breaker reimbursement, which we'll receive next year for this year, might also go down, because that, isn't that where more of the extraordinary costs go?
Right, so it could actually go down. But what also could be happening is the students that she's bringing back are not at that forty-five thousand dollars. So most likely, she's not bringing back that two hundred ninety-nine thousand one. However, at some point, that child's gonna age out, and then we won't have that. So Bethany's department is already looking at this year's, and she already knows what her claimable amount is. And then we just have to try to figure out what the state's gonna come in, seventy percent, seventy-five percent, including transportation? Not including transportation? So it is up in the, in the air still. But yes, if we bring all the students, then yes, we, that, that funding declines. But again, we use it for special education costs like the tuition, so we wouldn't, also wouldn't have the tuition bills.
If you look at the costs of the students as they are sort of organized by grade, is it pretty steady across? Or is there a period, is there a grade where there's a high, high cost?
So I wouldn't say that the cost, it, it really has more to do with the cost of the placement. And there's not really a pattern in terms of the grade level of students that are going to specific placement. So, so in other words, you know, students who are going to high-cost private-day placements, we might have one student at kindergarten level, you know, two students in third grade, one student in sixth grade, and one student who's, you know, so it's kind of spread out that way. We don't really have clusters of students grade level-wise, yeah.
One thing we do is we look at it as far as how many students are in the twelfth grade or aging out. So when we build our budget for the next year, we do take into consideration that we prorate it and figure out how much.
If you could, just for my benefit, because I'm old and I forget things, talk about the, the effect of move-ins of students with, who already are on placements, out of district placements. What the district can do to try to deal with what could potentially be a very high, high, high cost.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the move-in issue is, is very unpredictable, because of course, we just have no idea, for the most part, what's coming our way. What's interesting about the move-in, students who move in, in out-of-district placements is that there are very complicated regulations around who is responsible in terms of programmatic and fiscal responsibility, and so, and it varies based on the placement. It's really complicated, but students who move into the district who are in public placements, either collaborative placements or other public school placements, the district picks up responsibility immediately. So if we have a student who moves in tomorrow and they're attending the Kevin O'Grady School, we immediately become responsible. If a student moves in and they're in a private day or private residential placement, the, we immediately become programmatically responsible, but we don't become fiscally responsible until July one of the following year. But even more complicated, if they move in after April first, so if this year, if somebody moves in on April fifteenth and they're in a private day placement, we don't pick up fiscal responsibility until the following July one. So it's, you know, it's supposed to be a way for districts to manage unanticipated costs. The issue is that a lot of the public day placements are not that much different in cost from the private day placements. So, you know, we do have opportunities sometimes when students move in from, from other districts to try to bring them into our in-district programs. Again, there are lots of different reasons that students are out of districts. Some other districts don't have the strong in-district programs that we have. And so if they came from a district that didn't have programs, and now we do have programs, we can offer that to the families and bring students. we can offer that to the families and bring students back in district. But there's a piece of it that's just unpredictable and that we can't always guard against, which is why having that contingency fund with our circuit breaker revolving account is really important.
Because from what I've seen the last couple of years, you've gotten very fortunate with the move-ins, which has also helped with, with your, with your placement, your budget as well.
Right. We had two really, really high years with the move-ins. We had fourteen students one year and thirteen students another year, and then it's gone down since then, but we, you know, we don't know what will happen in the future.
I think it's always important to remember that Beverly is, is located near some very well-thought-of and highly sought-out private placements. So sometimes, if you're a family and you have a student that has a learning difference or a significant need, and you start to look, and you don't want them to travel from, you know, Acton or somewhere else, and to a placement that they're getting placed here, you start to look, and Beverly ends up, and that's, I think, sort of what really shows this landmark, there's Hopeful Journeys, there's
Kevin O'Grady.
Kevin O'Grady.
Beverly's School for the Deaf.
Consortium program. So those are, and those are all, School for the Deaf, the landmark, and Hopeful Journeys are, are very high-end, very expensive placements too, so that's a challenge that we face sometimes, but we've been, I just keep knocking on wood.
Thank you.
All right, does anybody else have any more questions about the circuit breaker in general? All right, so now we're moving into the
Okay, we're now going
repeatable part of the program.
No, we're gonna go and talk about school choice revenue update.
I lied, that's even highlighted on my screen, I'm sorry.
So this has been tabled from the last two meetings, because we didn't have the data, and we did just receive the data.
Are you going to, Jean, I'm sorry to interrupt, are you, are you gonna project your slides up there like Ms. Bethany did?
That would've been really nice if I was prepared for that, huh? And me not having an apple.
Okay, well then, no, so I guess I'll just ask around the table, does everybody have from their packet?
Well, actually, no, I don't have them, as, they're actually part of a little Excel.
Okay.
I'm an Excel, not a
That's fine. So everybody should have, Jean's gonna talk about some slides that were in your packet.
Yeah.
You should have them in your packet?
Yes, they should have them in their packet. So what happened is, they, I'm, so I, I'm gonna give a little update on the, on the school choice information, and then the slides that came, it really talks about the same data, but come, it kind of shows it to you in different things, so.
Beautiful, they're beautiful.
So I, you know, some people like to see Excel documents that are just plain numbers, like me, and then there's others that are a little bit different shown. So the school choice program is authorized under the MGL Chapter Seventy-Six, Section Twelve B, and school tuition, school choice tuition charges are assessed against sending districts and paid to receiving districts as part of the monthly local aid distribution. So in this, we actually get twelve payments, or the city gets charged twelve payments for the students that go out. What we receive is five thousand dollars for each student, and if they're going to the Commonwealth Virtual School, which is on my other document, as talks about TECA, it is eight thousand five seventy-two, plus an additional seventy-five dollars for an administration fee, that, that DESE does keep that separate. There is an incremental cost added to the tuition for each special education student we, that have received services to the receiving district. That is based on data that the special education gives to the Department of Education. I can't forecast what that's gonna be, I just see when it comes in what we're receiving. The December two thousand nineteen report from the DESE is reporting that the number of receiving students has increased, twenty-two point four students, which is currently estimated at one twenty-seven point oh students receiving this year. They do go into the point zeros, if somebody comes in in one month and leaves in one month, they, it's one-twelfth of a student. So therefore, we're estimating that we're gonna receive six hundred ninety-six thousand three forty-eight. Excuse me. These numbers are subject to change, so as we, you know, each, we do a recording, a count in October, I think it's January, and then March, and then the end of the year. So it can change, but currently, that's what they're saying is, that we have is a hundred and twenty-seven. We budgeted six hundred and twenty-one thousand seventy-two, so I am projecting seventy-five thousand two seventy-six surplus that will go into the school choice revolving account at this point of time over what we budget, our budget projection. I wouldn't go and spend that money, because sometimes we look at this October report, we have a hundred and twenty-seven, and then when we see the March report, it went down to the hundred and four. So we, that, we will not budget the appro, the additional funds for that reason. Additionally, the December two thousand nineteen report from the DESE is reporting that the number of students, sending students, has increased by nine, which is currently estimated at seventy-one, with the sending tuition estimate of four twenty-seven seven eighteen. And again, these numbers are subject to change. When I came to the district nine years ago, our numbers were reversed. We had more students going out than students coming in. You built a brand-new mid, high school, and that's when I saw the switch that we now are, so we have seventy-one going out and a hundred and twenty-seven coming in. So that's kind of my update on the circuit breaker, I mean, school choice. What I didn't put in here, as I'm realizing right now, is what we use the school choice funds for, is, it goes towards teacher salaries. So I primarily use it for high school, just so that it's easier for me on my end-of-year report. It's not based on, that's where the school choice students come in, just there, but our, what we use the revolving account for is high school teacher salaries. So this set of charts that I have here, it says on the top FY twenty, school choice in by sending districts. So what I've done is, we have a category that says other, which is fifteen, that's, there's many districts out there that you can actually tell from the next chart, where you'll see all the names of the schools. So there may be one or two coming from different districts. Most of our students, as you can see, are coming from Salem, we have forty-seven.
Jean, we have a question at the table, before you go much further.
Sure.
I just had a question. What happens to the surplus? You said there was a surplus.
That actually can roll over, so, yeah, so it can roll over till the next year to be utilized. So our appropriated funds have to be spent, our revolving funds do not. And the city council, and the Bryant, if they, when they voted in that we have a revolving account, they vote that our funds would revolve, stay in our revolving account.
Did you say though, that in the revolving account, although it can carry over, has to be spent the following year?
Circuit breaker by law has to.
Okay.
School choice, they don't say. But generally speaking, we do not carry more than, you know, so we budgeted six twenty-six, and I think we maybe had eighty thousand, I'm trying to guess on that one.
Anything that's remaining, what happens to that, to that?
It stays in the revolving account, and then when we build our budget for the next year, we may use it. What you don't wanna do is keep using it for continuous, you wanna use it for one time, but right now, we use it for salaries. So at, at some point, that number may shift, that we don't get as many students, so you want, you do wanna have that so that you can, you know, catch that. Any other questions on that? Okay. So forty-seven students come from Salem, and then twenty-two from Peabody, eighteen point five from Danvers, nine from Lynn, eight point five from Gloucester, and then Hamilton Wenham sends seven students. So what I did was I picked anything that was more than five and brought, brought it that out. The next chart is a bar chart, and that just kind of shows you for, for the last three years what has happened. So looking at this, I can see that Salem has been increasing, Danvers has been increasing, meaning the student, they're sending more students to us, but Lynn has decreased. And then there's one more chart, just where my numbers will tell me what is happening, you know, for the twenty-two students that came in, so I can see that Danvers, there was an increase from just the previous year of nine students, and then Salem, nine point six.
What are TECA and MAVA?
TECA is the state's, the Commonwealth Virtual High School, and I wrote it down, and I said to myself, oh, make sure you bring that, because somebody's gonna ask you, do you remember?
In the back, in the back row, Ms. Abel, do you remember, by chance? I thought if anybody
What it is is
it would be
So TECA is a virtual, an online offering, and parents can enroll their students in TECA, it's an online virtual academy.
Is that the same as the state program?
No.
Nope.
State program is Beverly Public Schools program. So that's not an out-of-district, and it's not, you're not school choicing, but when you enroll in one of the online virtual, and you have to be a full-time student, it can't be, so there are some supplemental opportunities to utilize some of the online services, but you have to be enrolled as a full-time student, and when you, they, they track attendance, they track grades, and we have had, so a student, I get letters occasionally that says, you know, such-and-such student is no longer attending TECA, and you should expect them to re-register back in Beverly, because they're not in our school. So it, you have to be matriculated as a full-time student in order to get, for us to be charged that eight thousand fifty, I think it's eight thousand fifty-seven dollars, so.
And the TECA stands for T E C Connections Academy, and it's located in Walpole, Massachusetts.
Yes.
I used my phone.
You anticipated part of my question, which was, can there be students who are enrolled and also sort of like doubling up, but could, could there be any overlap with our known homeschooling students in TECA as well, or is that, that's two separate?
So, so, I, I'm, I'm not gonna give a definitive, but I'm gonna give you my opinion on that. I believe that, so our homeschool families register with a homeschool program, and we, and that's approved by us. The TECA is a full-time academy. I do believe they offer some supplemental services, so a homeschool family can access some of their supplemental materials, but they're not, they don't technically enroll in that academy.
And so that would be different than the students for whom we're charged
Correct.
for the full enrollment. Okay, thank you.
And I don't believe there's a partial charge either, I don't know whether, I'm not really sure how they, how they, what they do about their supplemental programs that they offer, whether the parent is charged or whatever, but I don't believe that TECA charges us partial charge, I think they only can charge us for full-time enrolled students.
That's my understanding, though.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
So the other set of documents would be the, what Mr. Manzo was referring to was the school choice out students. So what I have done here is, we have seventy-one students that are going out. Looking at this, we see that twenty-six of them go to Hamilton Wenham, and sixteen go to Manchester Essex, and then there's various, that's just one, one or two, and then there is thirteen of the TECA. And then I have a chart that shows you, as you can see, the Hamilton Wenham is increasing in FY twenty, other ones are staying pretty much the same. The TECA, there was a larger amount in seventeen, so we are lower than the seventeen number, and then, just a comparison, just for the difference from last year to this year.
Okay. I have some questions, but does anyone else at the table have any questions? Any additional questions for Jean on choice in or choice out?
Hi, Evan. Just your opinion, other than building the new schools, what do you think are the reasons for so many more students choicing into Beverly?
So I think it was a gradual increase, for the most part, I think, as choice became a popular option, and people understood it, and, and the reputation of our schools, and the performance of our students, and the, you know, I think just it's an awareness that we're doing some really powerful things. I think we can also, I think there are some communities that might be struggling, or that parents perceive are struggling, and so they feel this is a good option for them to come. And I think, you know, I think it's that, I, I, you know, I don't think there's a, I don't think there's, I mean, when you build a new building, it's, it's, it looks, and it has a strong reputation, and the same happened with the middle school, but we have a limited number of seats in every grade level. So most of our seats are, are pretty, we're at capacity in a number of them already, so now it's harder to get in. So once we're filled, when a student, first of all, one thing that's important to know about school choice, when we accept a school choice student in, we accept them for the duration of their education, right up through twelfth grade. So if we, if we have a school choice in in third grade, then our, if you, you become our responsibility, we're responsible for you all the way through graduation. We can't say, you know, oh, sorry, we don't have enough seats this year. So once you're in, you become a Beverly Public School student, same thing as if you go out, the, the receiving school has to keep you, so. We did some work, Jean and I, because I said, Jean, where are they coming? What grade are they in? So Jean and I spent some time really looking. I think it's interesting to note that a good number of our school choice outs were high school, we were trying to figure out, is this a new trend? Are we losing in a particular grade level? Do we have any, you know, is there something that could give us some pause as to why this is happening? We saw a little uptick in some middle school students, I, I don't know whether the size of the building may have been intimidating to parents, but it was, it was much smaller than I had, I perceived, just from, from reports, you know, I've been hearing, oh, no, everyone's leaving their school, choosing out, and we did not find the data to show that. We have a number of our students who are in their junior and senior year that are choised out, which tells me they've been out for a while, because it's very rare to leave the district. Once in high school, you know, you don't really choice out in your junior or senior year. So that was, that was interesting to us, I'd say they were in the double digits, the number of kids that were in high school, particularly in the Hamilton Wenham district. So that was interesting. We'll be interested to see, as they graduate out of choice, do our choice out numbers go down? Do we see that? Very few elementary are, we have very few choicing out in elementary, and some of them that are choicing out are in a, like, further distance, so Rockport, so I would wanna say that a parent might work in Rockport if they're gonna, I don't know that they'd drive from Beverly to Rockport to school-choice their child out if it wasn't for a reason, or they have extended family and that's where they're, sometimes people choice out because they have extended family and the daycare option that they have, and the, you know, the ability for them to get their child to daycare afterwards is different.
Or working in the district.
Or working in the district, right? So like our Beverly teachers bring their students here to attend Beverly Public Schools, they're, those are choice, you know, we choice in a number of our faculty's children. My guess is it could be vice versa, the same thing happening in other districts, so.
Now, one thing I don't know, because your department does handle it, but do we have, do we have a lot more, Donna? Donna? On the school choice in, do we, are we able to place everybody? Do you know? I'm, I know, this is your first year, so I'm not sure.
So do I know what we have for openings right now?
Like, do we have more students that wanna come that we have to say no, they can't come?
Well, so I will say that I believe in the past years, we've allowed it to be a rolling choice admission, but I believe this year, we have a, we have said no, we are done, school choice is over, you had to have your letter in by a certain time, because that rolling admission was getting really challenging for us. And so, and I also am gonna be working, Cat Lyons, who's one of our attorneys, has just gotten some new updates on some of the legal, you know, some legal decisions that have been made that impact school choice and how you do it, and so she and I have an appointment to kind of get updated to make sure that we're in line with all of those things, too.
Right, so this would probably be a good time, especially for everybody who's new at the table. Each year, the school committee is presented with a school choice choice, we are presented with what are the class sizes at each grade, and what we have previously approved for choice in seats, I guess, for, and there are groups, we vote typically by groups of ages, but we can actually do by grade level, and sometimes we do that, there was a year that we said we will not allow any kindergartners to choice in, because we had a very large kindergarten class. And when we let somebody come in, especially in kindergarten, or in elementary school, they do not get to choose which specific school they go to. We put them in a school, in a classroom where we think we have capacity. So if we, you know, it is often the case that we see our class sizes in any given grade, at any given elementary schools, maybe nineteen on average, and another classroom in another elementary school might be, you know, twenty-one, then we would tend to put that school choice child in the, in the school with 19. We wouldn't put them in the school with 21. And so every year, we look at that as a school committee. We look at our class sizes and we vote how many children to accept in any given grade. But as, as Dr. Truchek said, once we say you can come in, we have, we have you for the, the duration. So I do have a question. And it kind of piggybacks on, on Ms. Robinson's question around the insights. Would we consider as a district trying to do a, both an exit and/or an inter interview? So for our choice students, regardless of which direction they're going, to actually try to interview them and get some more very tangible insights versus our own kind of, what do we think?
I mean, I think we could certainly survey them and, and find out, that would be easy enough to, you know, to get some feedback. I think that's a pretty good idea in terms of, you know, wondering what your choice is, because it could be as simple as, I work in Rockport and therefore I'm taking my child to Rockport. So, you know, certainly, I don't think there's anything, I don't think there's any, like, legal reason why we couldn't do it. There's no privacy or HIPAA law or anything like that that would stop us from doing that. So we certainly could, you know, be doing some of that. In terms of the in, you know, we could certainly, the same thing. We could do sort of on a survey, you know, some kind of a survey optional opportunity to do that.
And so I do think, somebody's question at the table, and I apologize for not remembering whose question it was, I do believe that there are certain grades that have a waitlist, meaning we have more children asking to come in than we have made seats available.
Oh, for sure. And those would be at grade five and at grade nine. So, you know, I think people in those transition years, and I think it's, it's interesting because we have changed our transition year from six to five. And so we do see a definite uptick in requests to come for fifth grade and for ninth grade. But, but we do get requests for 10th grade and for sixth and seventh and eighth. And we get a, believe it or not, I think Donna already has a stack for kindergarten. I mean, we, people are now understanding that they're, that, you know, it's, it's, you, you get your letter in. It is not a first come, first served. Choice is done by lottery, by law. The statute describes exactly how we have to do that. So it is not a first come, first served, but there is a deadline for the letters. And I think that deadline is May 1st, but I would double check the website if you're seriously wondering about it, because I, I'm just saying that.
And people actually start now, saying for next year.
Oh, we have letters. Actually, we have letters like the day after for next year. Yeah. And I, and we also, just in response to the placement of the school in elementary, we do get letters that say, I'd like to school choice and I'd like to go to the Cove School. And we will say, if they're, if they are chosen for one of the, if it's a lottery in that grade level, and we don't have, we do a lottery by grade level. So if we have 10 seats and we've got six already filled and we have four openings and we have eight applications, we do a lottery, we choose four names. If you're chosen, we will call, if, if they're, if the school you ask for has low enrollment in that grade level, we would probably, you know, try to accommodate you. If it doesn't, we would say, you know, you've been selected, we don't have room at Cove, we're offering a seat to you at Centerville, you're, it's up to you whether you choose it. Sometimes people do and sometimes they don't. I, I actually think, too, there are some families that have letters in for school choice at multiple districts. And so sometimes we do the lottery and we call you and, and they'll say, well, thank you, but we've opted to go to Manchester-Essigs or, or something like that. And so then we fill until we're full during that period, but then this year, we, we stopped when, when we were done. We didn't continue a rolling admission, so to speak, so.
Does our requirement to cover the expense of educating the child for the length until they're in 12th grade, if they choose to go out of district, only apply if they're choosing to go to a public school? That doesn't apply if they're choosing to go to a private school like Landmark, for example, right?
So Landmark is a special education placement and that would be done via the IEP process. So our obligation is to educate them in whatever the least restrictive environment their, their individual learning needs require. Did I say that right?
Yep.
And so we would be obligated to, if, if, if out of an IEP team meeting, a placement at Landmark was recommended, but at some point, we switch over and Bethany's going to tell you what that point is.
So if a student who's school choice into our district ends up going to an out of district placement, the process that Jean described before, where we complete through the special ed department in incremental form for claims for students who are school choice, so whatever the set amount is, that's not how they're billed if they are out of district. So we get those costs then reimbursed. So it's a different process than the in-district special education cost. So there's the flat rate for the students who are school choice, then there's an incremental rate for students who receive in-district special education costs, and then costs that are out of district are billed back to the district.
Right, but what about if they, if a school choice out were to go to St. John's or not special ed?
County school.
Right, I believe that was really your question, right?
They no longer school choice if they enroll into a private, non-special education placement.
So we have no monetary?
None.
No fiduciary responsibility in that scenario.
And once they've left us, now they're no longer our school choice, and if they went to St. John's for a year and they wanted to come back, they would have to reapply through the school choice process or go back to their sending district.
Right, but I'm a Beverly kid, I'm a Beverly student, I'm a, I'm a parent of a Beverly student and I send them to the Saints Academy or I send them to Shore Country Day. Beverly Public Schools has no fiduciary responsibility. We don't have to pay the $5,000 in that scenario.
Well, you're a Beverly citizen, so you wouldn't be a school choice to begin with.
I'm choicing out.
Choosing out is what she's saying.
She's, she's trying to ask, do we have any, when, when a Beverly child chooses out to Hamilton-Wenham?
Yep.
We send $5,000 to Hamilton-Wenham.
Well, the Department of Ed takes it from us, yes.
Yes. So if, if I choice my child to a private school, not special ed related?
Then you've, you've exited the, the school choice process. You're no longer, and you're no longer enrolled in a public school and so that it comes off the books. And if you leave, like Jean said, if you leave in January, when we only pay .5 of that, you know, because it's, it's only for when you attend the school in the other district. Yes, thank you.
But at the same time, if your student requires services, however, and they're at Shore Country Day down the street, Beverly still provides those services for Beverly students.
Correct. We live in Beverly.
Correct.
All right, that was on one of our previous slides.
You're right.
All right, any more questions about school choice?
This is just a clarifying question, just following up on that. So the numbers that you're showing for choice out, these represent choice out to public districts and don't capture anybody in Beverly who is elected to send to private.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so now, now we're going to go into the regularly scheduled, the things we do every duh da month.
Yes. So every month, I start off with giving a revenue report. That's this report here. And so on this, the city appropriation, when we do these revenue report, we do it based on the previous month, so as of 12/31/19. So the first line talks about our city appropriation.
Jean, do you mind if I interrupt you just to confirm that we're looking at the same document?
Yep.
Okay.
It's a one pager.
I saw a couple of people wondering the same thing. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Yep. So the first thing is the city appropriation, which at the, when we got our appropriation from the budget process, it was $60,697,111. But since then, the city council has appropriated the additional funds for Chapter 70. So when you see this report, next month, you'll see something under the plus and minus column, that's going to be the additional appropriation. But since it wasn't done until in, in January, I wanted to update it because we get quarterly payments. The city actually puts the quarterly payments on here and they've only booked it as of that. So next month, you'll see an additional amount under the, under the plus and minus. And I'm going to give a shout out to Carol to just make sure that she's changing her amount that comes out to us. The next thing I have is the school department reimbursements. So I'll just read the names of them and kind of tell you a little bit about them. So the school choice, we talked about, circuit breaker, we talked about, special education tuition account. So there was nothing budgeted for it, but we're taking, we're estimating to take, forecasting that we're going to take in $199,400 based on the students that Bethany has been able to bring in. So the two position that you approved this evening will be coming out of that. This is just a revenue report, but I'm just highlighting that that's where those funds would be coming from. And that would be special education tuition. So that would be any students that come into us from other communities, not through a school choice, but somebody that has written an IEP with their students and their district to have them come here versus a private placement. And we set that up as a revolving account. The next line is a non-resident tuition and then I have in parentheses, SEVIS. That's handled at the high school. So those are students that come in for one year and one year only from foreign countries. So that number has been dwindling a little bit as far as how many students are coming in. I don't know if you have any more information on that, but it was something that we've had in place for about six years, I think. And that they can only come for one year and they have to get a visa and.
Like an exchange program?
Yeah, it is, it's a foreign exchange program, so, oh, I'm sorry. It's a foreign exchange program and I think we can look to the climate to wonder why our numbers are dwindling in some of those programs, so. And, and not the weather, correct? Not the weather.
The next item I have is miscellaneous revenue. We haven't seen anything in that this year. And then the next thing is the education fund and that's where Beverly residents are able to put money, additional money on their taxes that is earmarked for education. So each of those revolving, each of those accounts, and I'm going to be talking about some where we have fees, all of those have their own individual revolving account in our MUNIS system and all of those roll over. Any balances roll over from year to year. Excuse me. The next group we have is the school department fees area. So we have the transportation revolving where we receive students to take the, that are charged to take the bus, building rental fees, and I just have YMCA after-school program listed, that that's one of the larger areas where we take the funds in. Preschool revolving for the preschool, kindergarten revolving for all-day kindergarten. And then we have user fees for the athletics at the high school and middle school combined. And then we have user fees for elementary string and band. And then we have the summer academy, which we haven't been running in the last few years, but I've kept it in there just in case. So this report here shows you in the first column, what we have earmarked as money that's going to be a budget offset. The second column is showing you that we were not forecasting that we're going to be able to take in that much money, so we had to use some of the revolving account balance for that. So as you can see, it's under the non-resident tuition. So we budgeted $105,000, but we're going to have to use 37 of the balance, which I gave a update to the school committee, I think in October, of what those balances were. So I can try to send that back out, just so people can see that. And what that is saying is that we don't, we know we're not going to be taking in $105,000. So we're forecasting to take in $67,525, which we've already got it because we get the money before they come. So what I have to do is use that revolving because we already have things earmarked in our budget that comes to $105,000.
Oh, okay. So you're taking money from the revolving count left over from last year to supplement what you're not getting this year?
To, yep, to meet the needs, yep. And then the building rental, we've been trying to work on that. So this item here, at one time, we used to rent out the McEwen School to the North Shore Consortium and used to have a big revenue. So we're trying to get that to be more in line. So what we've been doing is, we haven't reduced what our budget offset is because we've, we've had a balance in the revolving. That one, excuse me, I have to actually be looking at for FY '21, that the surplus, the savings is dwindling. So just this year, I had to use almost half of it from the revolving. So that's something that we'll be looking at our budget offsets, which when we start getting into budgeting, you'll hear more about that. But that right now, what we have for budget offsets would be for a portion of the custodial salaries and utilities at the high school and the high school, gas and electric. So that's something that we'll be working on our budget to make sure that we have what we have for budget offset more aligned with what we're, our actual will be receiving. And that's something that we've been working on for the last five years. Is that how long we've been at McEwen? I think so.
Four, maybe.
Four years. And then the next column is where we have, so the third column is talking about things that when we built our budget, pluses or minuses. So first thing I told you earlier this evening is that we're receiving in $75,270, $270 more in school choice. So that's where it's going to come in, show there. And then circuit breakers, right now, because that can change once I get another number from the DESE, but right now. And then the special education, we didn't budget anything. However, Bethany's just got two things that she's approving. And then the education fund, we don't have that budgeted and we've received so far $240. And then in the next group, we can see preschools taking in, and kindergarten took in more, and elementary took in. If I have an area that is a minus there, it's really going to be more in, we're going to have to go to the revolving. Because if we've already budgeted, we have to make sure we balance on that. Excuse me. The next column talks about what, what our forecast receipts are. Second, the last column is what have we received to date? And then the last column is what do we need to collect? So that's pretty much a quick and dirty talk about what the, what our revolving, what our revenues are.
So I would say to all the new people at the table, and this is something I asked Mr. Manzo over the phone the other day, like, when we look at these reports, so you'll, we get one of these every, every time we meet. And generally, I look at the to be collected and I go, okay, is that out of line? Is it not out of line? And at some point in time, you'll get, maybe more comfortable with the numbers, but a very quote-unquote "normal" question to ask is, Jean, are we at all concerned with the fact that we have not yet collected, you know, almost $400,000 in school choice funds? Right, that would be a reasonable thing.
Right. So Jean would answer that, yes, that comes in monthly so that you still have six months to be collecting.
Right. And, and so that's true, like with the kindergarten.
And circuit breaker, you can see that we've received half and I've already said that that comes in quarterly, so.
And then like athletics, we have three different seasons. So the fact that we haven't collected all the athletic fees yet is, is to be expected because we still have a spring season to be played and perhaps not even, perhaps some of the winter fees haven't been collected yet. But we did have a, a change around collection for athletic fees. Yes, Mr. Silic?
For the athletic fees, is this, is this amount what it takes to run all athletics?
So what it is, is what we have budgeted is $209,748 is going to come in from, from the athletic fees to run the program. This is, does not run all of the program, but when we have our budget offset, we say we're going to take in about $209,748. And it's been a good estimate each year. It's just been right around about that, you know, $200,000 to $210,000 that we take in for student, from the students for the program. But that's not the only cost. We would have to go and look at what's in the appropriated budget as athletics. We'd have to look at the revolving account, what the expenses are. And the revolving account would roll over, but it's not a, we don't roll over an awful lot. But it doesn't, this doesn't just tell you what the whole thing is. It's pretty much more, it's more in line with what have we have for budget offsets. And to answer your question, all of the, right now, I feel comfortable with all of the, with the balances to be collected. Sometimes we do have issues where parents are having trouble with paying their tuitions and I'll make an agreement with them that I'll be, I'll let them go into the summer to help pay sometimes, you know? So we work with our parents. I may all of a sudden make an adjustment because I have a parent that comes in and says that they, you know, they've lost their jobs, they don't have the funding for one of the things we charge fees for. So we'll issue them a scholarship, then my, my forecasted receipt is going to go in a different direction.
All right, are there any other questions on the revenues report? Okay.
So the next thing I have is the, the expenditure report. So there's one that is. So there's one that is 38 pages long, and then I have two smaller ones that I've actually introduced to the committee this month. I figured out how to print the grant ones, so I brought those forward. So the first thing I usually have is this report that says year-to-date budget report that's 38 pages long. When we get into budgeting, what we have is we have cost centers that, you know, Ayers is AY, Centville is CE. Excuse me. The first column that you see in numbers is the original appropriation. And if you look at the last page, you'll see under the transfers and adjustments, so this kind of gets a little tricky. When we get to the second column, that's going to include any carryover purchase orders. So if there's a purchase order that was written in the previous year and that it, and it was not paid for, the purchase order will roll over into the next fiscal year so that you can pay the bill. The other thing that will be in that, in that column is the amount that the city appropriated for our additional funds that we received in for Chapter 70. So that's going to be a positive transfer amount, adjustment amount. So the second column is talking about transfers in and out, and most of it's going to be the carryovers from purchase orders and that additional 320,000 that we received. The third column is talking about the revised. It just takes the first column and adds the second column or subtracts the second column. The next column is the year-to-date expenditures, so that's actually what we've spent year-to-date. This report, if you look over on the left-hand side, it says 2020 and then the period, there's a 99. That tells you it's period 99, which means if there's a purchase order that has been entered, it's already accounted for under the encumbrance area. If payroll is being, already in here and posted, or invoice is entered but hasn't totally been, it shows everything to date currently. The encumbrances would be purchase orders that we have written, or money that has been earmarked designated for specific, which is through purchase orders, is the encumbrances. And then the final column is going to be the available budget. And so at these meetings, people may ask me questions to look at a specific item. The one thing that we, I have a chart that I use in my office that kind of tells me. So I'm going to look at page 14, for instance. It's HA075, and there's the teacher salaries. So looking at this area, I should be looking at, most of the teachers should be at 42%. That's just based on what period. So the teachers are paid, so we have four pay periods, so it's kind of gets confusing. So we have, teachers get paid 26 equal payments. So we figure out what they're going to make, we divide it by 26. Paraprofessionals, it's based on 22 periods. And then we have weekly people that are paid 52 weeks, and then we have summer people that are paid 44 and 22. So I think I said four, but we have that many different, so, so there's a lot of movement. I do not have salaries encumbered in this report. However, that's what I would look at, and if I see something that is a little bit off, I look at my payroll to see, is it something that should be charged to a grant? Sometimes the number may be a little skewed because somebody has taken a day off without pay, so therefore, other things, there's might be a stipend that's attached to that line. So that's what I look at. Each month, there's areas that I'll say, let's, you know, let's look at this. So I may look at, you know, so substitutes is one area that I tend to like to look at, which is on page 32, and it's under OT, which stands for other, 275. And I like to look at that, and what I look at is, I'll look at year-to-date for the previous year.
Right.
So I look at that. That's nothing that I would anticipate. Anybody on this committee would say, oh, okay, I need to know that. But I'm welcome anytime anybody has a specific question on something. There's areas that, there's some things that may not get paid out. So we have some stipends that are paid in December and June. We have some stipends that are only paid in June. So it, it fluctuates. Another area that, of course, where our biggest expenses are, Ms. Glansky's department, is SP 860, which happens to be on page 37. And so I look at that. One thing to, I'd like the committee to know is that Bethany and I, her out-of-district chairperson, her bookkeepers, my bookkeeper, all meet, and we've included the transportation director, meet, we meet once a month and talk about special education, who's out, who's going. So one thing in the past that hadn't happened is we didn't change the encumbrances every single time something happened. It's very tedious and time-consuming, but it's, this is the snapshot today. Tomorrow, that snapshot may be different. So each time, if we have a placement that somebody goes from a private day to a collaborative, we go in, change that purchase order, reduce one, increase the other, so that we know that this is where we are. I do see some balances in here. What we plan to do is look at this in January, February timeframe, and we're going to look and see if some of these items could be moved to the circuit breaker. Some of the costs can be moved to circuit breaker so that we can carry over to try to get to that 50%. But that's an area, I look at this all the time. If anybody has any specific questions, sometimes somebody will see, ask a question, and I won't know the answer. I have to go and look it up in Munis to see the detail.
I think I have a terminology question, but I think I've answered it. I just want to talk it through a little bit.
Okay.
So I was trying to follow the meeting minutes from last year, and let me know if you want to take this offline, or sidebar, or whatever, table it. So I was following, I was trying to follow the 74,021 dollars from last year that was used for some expenses, and it's still not clear to me whether or not that's principal discretionary money, which again, we can take this offline. But part of my question while I was reading that was also reference to like AD 700 61013, account admin contingency account. And I see on page two that that 700 61013 is a salary contingency?
Yep.
So I think I've answered part of my question, but also made it more confusing.
So my bookkeeper actually said to me, you know, that said salary and contingency, and you wrote admin contingency? And I'm like, oh.
Oh.
So I'm like, yeah, I was thinking admin of AD 700 admins, so, yes. So the remainder, so what happened, if you looked at this, if you look at that report on page two, and you see the 74021 is the original budgeted amount?
Yeah.
So what happened is that's what rolled over, because when Dr. Hershey wrote, did his budget, he didn't allocate that anywhere. He left it there. Last month, we voted to move it to certain areas, which some was going to the principals interdisciplinary, and we put some to the nursing, the line for software. So we moved all of that. So if you look over to the budgeted amount, the 230, 831 that's available is the amount that we received in extra Chapter 70 funds that hasn't been allocated anywhere. So I know it gets, it gets confusing.
It is confusing.
And so what happened is that money is still yet to be determined where. So I have to go to school committee and tell, and do it through a transfer and ask them. So I cannot transfer from one cost center, meaning two letters, AD, to a CE, without school committee approval, so that...
I think I saw reference to that in meeting minutes from last year.
Yep. So that's what I did. Now, when we received the additional $320,000 from the city for the Chapter 70, we said during that acceptance of the money, that 90,000 was going to go to the high school for the outreach counselor there, and the remainder was going to go there. So that's what my school committee members should be saying, okay, yep, Jean still has that 230. Now, I could move that to another AD account without having to go there, but because we brought it in as additional, I wouldn't do that. I would, I want it clear. I want transparency so people would see it. So when we receive that extra 320,000 transparently, right from the beginning, I said, so much is going to go to the high school, the remainder is going to go here for school committee further appropriation.
So it hasn't been appropriated?
It has not.
So just the 90,000 for the outreach council?
Yes.
The 230 is still at the discretion of you in the school committee?
So we make a recommendation and has to be voted on by the school committee?
The administration with it, yeah.
So just still in limbo, basically? It's sitting in town?
Still sitting there, yep.
That's one of my questions you answered. Thank you.
It's 230 minus 90, just so I'm clear?
No.
Nope. 230, no, 320, yep.
After the 90. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So one of the ways I could have done it is brought in the whole 320 there and then asked them to move it, but since we already knew we wanted to get that outreach council, and let's get them going.
Sure.
We funneled the money so that when you were not looking at the outreach council line, say, that number's not budgeted correctly.
All right, but I just wish to follow up. So your point is that our meeting minutes, about the 74,000 from last meeting, and those transfers were not clear?
I was unclear about that, but it might be just because I wasn't understanding part of it, and part of it might have been that I didn't see an attachment, which I know I can get, but I think isn't made publicly available until after we approve the minutes. There was an attachment to the minutes, I'm trying to flip for it, that specifically was titled, give me just one second, 74,000, yeah, so budget transfer 74,021, which I think might have answered part of my question. I didn't have it, but I think I can get it.
Okay. So that's true, right, that we don't make our attachments available?
Well, they're available if you click on them when they're online, I think.
But are they available online prior to the minute meetings being approved?
I'm not sure when Donna gets them out there. I think it's after.
Okay.
I think it goes in as one whole.
All right. So we're just in this conundrum because people were new, but they didn't vote on the meeting minutes anyway.
Right.
But moving forward...
They would have seen them at the meeting.
They would have seen, like, our attachments at this meeting.
Yeah, that's true. That's a good point.
So I bring them to this meeting, and then Larinda brings them to the full committee at, or committee at the hall.
Okay.
So if anybody, does anybody have any specific questions on any lines they want? And if anybody wants to come in and, you know, just talk about, like how we do this, by all means, I'm more than welcome to have you come in.
So again, I would say that my, my technique with this report, which is often a lot of pages, is to kind of thumb through and look at when we have like a really low percentage used, especially halfway through the year, I'll go, why, why haven't we spent more money here? Or a very high percentage, you know, we're way ahead of schedule of our spending. Those are the things that are most easy to kind of catch from your own eye glaze. And then Jean almost always has a fantastic answer for why, why we're skewed like that. And sometimes we're skewed, and the fact of the matter is, we have to then figure out a budget transfer to make, make ends meet. Yes?
With that being said, one question then. On the middle school, the advised student advisors, budgeted 57,000, there's only 10,000 spent. So I'm assuming that's to do with activities, if I'm not mistaken?
Yep.
Any particular reason? Is it just that we're still up and going, trying to get that formulated?
Yep. So those, so those are stipends, and, and again, some of the stipends are paid December and June, some are paid just December, some are paid just June, so those are areas. And the other thing is under that, what page are you on?
24.
On page 24. The other thing too is under that student advisors, student advisors line, also because I didn't have a place to put in what we give, that we donate or we contribute, is the word, contribute to nature's classroom. So we say that we're going to pay for the transportation, and I think we pay for the teacher overnight, the stipends. Those, that's going to happen after nature's classroom, so, so that's another area. So the student, that amount for student advisors is the, it may be, if there's a stipend for a specific club, and I'm not sure off the top of my head what we have for the middle school, that's one thing we're working on for budgeting, I mean, for negotiations we're talking about. But I do, I do know that I expect that to be low at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other, any other questions on the expenditures?
So then the next report you're going to see is, there's two one-page reports, one that, in the little black area, it says SO2, state, state school grants. So what this is showing you is that we have two grants that are state-funded. We have the CSHS and the turnaround assistance grant, also known as TAG. Both of those were just recently set up, that we just received the funds in. One is for 5,000 and one is for 10,000. So in next few months, you'll see that there's some year-to-date expenditures. So what you'd be looking for in this particular grant is, do I have any negative amounts, or are we spending them, and so on and so forth? So the, any grant has to be accepted by the school committee. So these are the two state grants. So that means the funding is coming from the state and state funds versus, the next group I'll be talking about is federal funds. The money comes through the state, but was originally federally funded. So the federal government puts it through the DESE. So, so I have those two reports. The other one is SO3. Excuse me.
Jean, where are these numbers that you're referencing? I'm trying, oh, I see it.
They're right here, yeah.
I got it top left.
So in my world, it's, these, this is an SO1, SO2, SO3.
Okay.
And quite honestly, I just, the other day, I was like, there's got to be a way I can print this out without bringing up, you know, all of the, you know, city accounts and, and that's where we get into a little, we share the same Munis system as the city, so if I try to run too much, it's a 5,000-page report. So what I, I did figure out how I could run just the FY '20 grants. And so this is just showing you that we have a Title I grant that's for 675,000. We have a Title IV that's 41, Perkins Grant that's 31. I went to page two, so I apologize. We have Title II-A, Title III. Bethany has a special education grant that comes in, and then we have the 262, F20262 grant that's a, is a preschool allocation. So if I look at this totally, we have 2,376,45 in federal grants. So I'm going to plan on bringing that monthly along with my SO1, and it just, it's just more data for you.
So, not to confuse things too much, but just remember that these entitlement grants that are here are, are able to be carried over for two years. So there's FY '19 funding, we spend that. So we have some FY '19 and FY '20 grants, both live. We spend down the '19s first before the '20s. We don't need to deplete these federal grants by the end of this fiscal year. They can be carried over, a certain percentage can be carried over. So don't be alarmed if not all of it is gone because we are, we sort of try to pace ourselves with some of them. We never know what's coming the next year in federal grants. It's, you know, an entitlement grant, but it's, you know, based upon availability of allocation. So I just wanted to share that unlike this one here, where we spend all the money before the end of the year, these, we may not spend all the money before the end of the year. And we may have written the grant with a two-year goal, and so we may not even be planning on, but we may be choosing to be implementing something and we're planning on spending some of it in FY '20 and some of it in FY '21. So I just wanted to...
And I did not bring any of the FY '19 carryover that Dr. Prochek has added on here to...
So, no, I don't, I'm not adding on, I just, I didn't want you to be nervous if not all the money was going down.
I'm just trying to keep up. I didn't even notice that.
I, I mean, that's the thing, is like, she is correct. We have FY '19 and FY '20. However, I didn't want, because I was introducing it for the first time, I just wanted to bring, so I could bring FY '19 and FY '20, and then, and some years you actually have three rolling and you're trying to close up.
Yes, we can have up to three at some times.
So I figured just for, Larinda and I were talking in the office the other day about, you know, what additional reporting we can, and I says, well, I think I'm pretty sure I can figure out how to do the SO2 and the SO3. And when I got in there, it's going to grab everything that they have back in '07. So I said, okay, how can I run this? And I'm like, all right, let me just run it with the F20s to have that, so. And we are pretty much closing down '19, so, and, and we do not send money back to the state.
You can send it to me. No, I'm just kidding.
That's right.
And that's probably not a funny joke to make in this room.
I know, yeah, exactly. On your first day.
For everybody that already knows the answer to this question, I'm going to say thank you for your patience. thank you for your patience, I just want to make sure I understand, so the SO1 report, money has to be spent same year?
Yep.
SO3 report, we can carry it for two years?
Yep.
But then, what money, so this is a budget, so SO1 represents what you've budgeted, what you haven't spent?
So this is the, what we, yep, so SO1 we-
Where is the money that we have to spend this year that I have to look at?
This one here.
But where in that?
All of this.
All of it, okay.
Yep, so we have 61 million, so we have 61,376,331 that we have to spend this year.
Okay.
And we will.
And so for, for reference-
And we will, okay.
We call that the appropriated budget, that's one way to think about it, like, that's the appropriated budget, so that's what we have determined, you know, that's the big budget that the city council approves as part of the big budget, the school committee sends the recommendation forward, that's the, and then the rest of these are supplemental sources of money that we have, either state funding, federal funding, or the revenue, the revolving accounts, which come in for fees and/or other things.
And that one, we didn't bring forward, because I have to try to figure out that one.
But, but those amounts, to be very clear, those amounts, like the federal grants amounts, are built into that budget.
Okay.
That is part of the money that we're going to spend, it's just that we look at it differently, we, we look at it separately, it's a, it's a distinct and separate income source, so we look at it.
That feels mostly clear to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready for our last and final topic of the evening?
Did you have any more questions on my expense?
Okay, I'm sorry, do, does anybody have any more questions on the expenditures?
Do we have to approve these?
Sorry?
Do we have to approve, Mr. Manzo wants to know if we have to vote on any of those, and I believe the answer is no.
The expenditures or reports, you do not vote on, the next item you do, but no, that's just informational, both the, the revenues and the expenditures are, normally, at this time, I'd be bringing any transfers, so anytime I can't transfer from A D to A D, if I have to cross those cost centers, I bring those forward, sometimes they have to be done before, I'm, I'm presenting them, they've already been done, because I can't have a negative account with the city at any time, so that's one thing that they've tightened up on, so therefore, it has, it's created that I have to do the transfer ahead of time, or at that time, so in other words, say a custodial supply line goes over by $10, I have to find the money in another area, so if I can find it from a BG account, BG, I can just do that, and nobody needs to vote on it, but if I need to find something that wasn't a very good example, but if I have to go from, from one school utility to another school utility account, I have to bring it here.
And you can't go into the negative purse of the city, so you have to make the, you have to make the transfer prior to it being approved.
Right, so what happens is, the outside auditing firm has tightened up that with the city, because they could see negatives, I'm going to tell you what really drove that was, we had the circuit breaker revolving account, so I would run these accounts in the negative until at the end of the year, and then I'd go, phew, over here, now I have to charge the revolving, so now that's why, when I spoke earlier about the SP 860, I said, we're going to be looking at that in February, because now we're going to shift some of those expenses back into the appropriate if we, if we have the money, so, more to come when I talk about those transfers. The last thing I have is our gifts to schools, so I do not have any grants, I do not have any transfers for this month, gifts to schools, so those have to be voted by the school committee, and Barbie said it was very lean, and she remembered to put down the total at the bottom, so I didn't have to add 1,000 plus $75 in my head, so we have gifts to schools totaling 1,075.
So I would entertain a motion to accept this 1,075?
Second.
And this is where I always say, who would ever say no to free money, are there any questions around these gifts to schools? Seeing none, I ask you to vote, all those in favor of accepting the 1,075, any opposed? That concludes our agenda.
Yes, so our next meeting, we do not have a guest speaker coming, unless you want to add one, we can talk about that next week if you want, we were hoping to come up with something with a, some kind of primer course, some primer documents, but I know we're talking about, maybe that's a whole year issue, so, so that's something, I'm not sure if you want to meet with me next week to see if there's something that you want to put in place of that.
We'll, we'll talk, we'll have a, I'll bring you a Diet Pepsi, and we'll talk.
Okay, if we do add a guest speaker, we'll send out an email to the committee to let you know, and then if there's any questions, and again, if anybody has any questions after all of this, with this being new, by all means, Bethany's available, I'm available, and Dr. Shirochek is always available.
All right, so that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, any opposed? Better not ever be unopposed for that particular question, all right, thank you again, everybody, for coming, hopefully, our, our future meetings will go a little faster, maybe not take quite so long, now that we kind of got FNF 101.